We'll call the Williams County Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, August 17th, meeting to order. Beth, will you call and roll?
Barry.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. We will continue. Let's start with the pledge. Okay, let's start with the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Beau.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So we'll jump right into the public hearing for Upper Missouri District Health Unit's budget. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public on the Upper Missouri District Health Unit 2022 budget? 2021 budget, yeah, 2022, sorry. Any comments from the public on the Upper Missouri District Health Unit 2022 budget? Third and final request for any comments on the Upper Missouri District Health Unit 2022 budget? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we need to have a motion to approve it, or do we just, is that a... Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the 2022 Upper Missouri District Health Unit budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it should be worthwhile, Mr. Chairman, to note that it looks like to me the budget has gone down for 2022 versus 2021. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's all COVID-related, but that's, yeah, they won't have as much funding from COVID, so. Excellent. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Beau.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Darcy.
Good morning, commissioners. We have two abatement hearings this morning. The first one is for Donald Anderson. He did come in and bring his 2018 statement of farm gross income in on August 2nd. And his income was 89% total, which is within the minimum of the North Dakota Sentry Code. We have heard this earlier. You guys asked me to bring it forward again, so.
Okay, do we need to address these individually?
Yes.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to approve the farm exemption for Donald Anderson.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Steve.
Yes.
Beau.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The second one is for John Berger for the 2020 tax year on the southeast of the northeast of Section 14 in Cow Creek. He is requesting an approval of his vacant farm residence application. Mr. Berger did not return his farm residence exemption application to our office before February 1st. He submitted his exemption application on August 2nd this year. His property would qualify for the vacant residence category. As Town Creek Township is unorganized, there is no local board hearing.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I would move to approve the exemption for John Berger also.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Beau.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Okay, facilities.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Keith Clevin, facilities director, just here this morning to let you know, we finally found somebody to put a roof on the Broadway Commons, which a four-story building has been a challenge. And we are moving forward with that. See, we finally got our insurance credit, too. Part of that will get, we will get part of that when we finish the project.
Fantastic. Any questions for Keith?
It will be a steel, architectural steel roof, too, instead of the shingles, which has a 35-year warranty. We shouldn't have to be up on that roof. That roof's horrible to get up on.
That's awesome. And the money is coming from?
The 116 fund.
Okay.
Do we need, I mean, did we already approve it, or do we need to approve this? I know we talked about it.
Yeah, it's already signed off on, right? I mean, it's...
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought we'd already... Glad you found somebody.
Yeah.
We have to do something.
Yep.
I mean, there's...
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dennis.
The bridge certification for the region, for the bridge inspections, the certification needs to be signed if you so approve.
And where's the funds going to come for to take care of the match? County budget?
It's budgeted for in Iowa 1, under bridges. Yep. Correct.
Okay.
It's, well, it's supposed to be every other year, but they started last year. They're still in doing them this year, so it'll be a continuous thing for the most part.
Gotcha. So we need a motion and an authorization to chairman to sign, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Beau.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then September 21st, we'll have the County Roads Day from 4:00 to 7:00 for the public. County, is it exact words, County Road Day, Lindsay? County Roads Day. And we'll have, well, we'll have some booths there with Vector and Weed and Vision Zero, and of course, a table with you guys, 4:00 to 7:00.
Yeah, I was just gonna say it.
September 21st.
Are you putting out a dunking booth, is that what you...
A dunking booth?
I'd probably be the only one getting dunked.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. LTAP, out of County Highway. We're in the planning stages right now with LTAP. They're, of course, the major push or sponsor, whatever you want to call it. Vision Zero. Hopefully Vector and Weed will have a table there. There's all kinds of thoughts. It all comes together that day, and of course, the public will be able to start coming at 4:00. We'll have food, something, barbecue. Probably a good thought. We'll see how it all comes together. Other than that, that's it.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. Wow, boogie. Okay, State's Attorney, Karen, thank you.
Good morning. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a tax foreclosure proceedings ordinance authorizing county property, and then a change in state law. I just want to give you a heads up. We still have a few months to really be concerned about this, but... Okay, so under prior state law, once the board set the minimum sale price during the tax season, if the property did not sell at the November annual sale, they would not be able to change the minimum sales price until the following tax year. Now, under the new law, if property does not sell at the annual tax sale, this board has the right, has the ability now to reappraise and then set a different minimum sales price for the property that's still outstanding, really. But one of the things with that is that if you do decide to reappraise it after the annual sale price, you have to notify the affected cities and the affected township so that they have a right to object to the new minimum sales price. So that's one aspect of the law. The other aspect of the law, too, regarding the disposition of excess proceeds, this is after the taxes, the specials, penalties, interest, and the publication costs, and I believe the mailing costs are taken from it. It used to be under state law that, the state law specifically said that excess proceeds would go into the county general fund. However, now the new law says that the excess proceeds are supposed to be held by the county for 90 days for the owner. And if the owner doesn't claim them within 90 days, then the county has to send them to the state abandoned property office. And then, once they're in that office for three years, then they go to the common school trust fund. So anyways, I'm bringing this up. I tried to, I try, I'm, yeah. So did you have questions about the particular...
I, no, I'm making a snide comment about them going into the common school trust fund. Sorry.
Okay, yep, okay. So anyways, but you also are aware that we adopted an ordinance under Home Rule Charter that allows us to dispose of tax foreclosure property in a certain way, which the excess proceeds go into the county general fund. However, because our ordinance sort of tracks the current, the prior law, I'm recommending to the board that we actually sort of tighten up that ordinance and sort of solidify the fact that that ordinance, if we sell property under that ordinance, under our Home Rule Charter powers, that that money still goes into the county general fund, and we don't give it back to the owner. So I'm asking the board if it's okay if I propose some sort of changes to the board at its next meeting, and if you're okay with those changes, then we would have a first reading, a publication, and a second reading. And like I said, since the sale isn't until November, we still have a couple of months, but I wanted to bring it to you now.
Are we sure that the school trust fund doesn't need a little more money in the bank?
So do you want a motion, or what would you like?
No, no, no. I'll just bring the, sort of, the proposed amendments to you at the next meeting. If you like them, then I'll finalize them, and then we'll have the first reading at the first meeting in September.
So Karen, in this case, then state law doesn't supersede our local?
Nope, nope, because a Home Rule Charter county, we actually can actually trump state law in certain circumstances, really. And it's usually matters of local concern. And since we're talking about local property, in my opinion, it's a local concern. For example, like, we would not be able to, you know, deal with, like, saltwater disposal wells or oil and gas, because that's like more of a statewide kind of thing, but this local property, local prop, yeah, that's a local concern. So, yes.
I believe you.
Yep. Yep. So anyways, okay, good, good, good. Okay, the second thing is the Williams County asset forfeiture policy change. Okay, under the current policy, the assets forfeiture board has the right to approve a fund request up to $2,500 without this county commission approval. And they can approve up to $30,000 per year without this commission approval. Anything after that has to come to this commission. At the asset forfeiture board meeting last week, they made a recommendation that the policy be changed so that the chairman of the asset forfeiture board, which is the sheriff, can approve invoices or requests for funds from the Northwest Narcotics Task Force up to $10,000. And so you should have copies of the changes to the policy. And so what, based on that motion that they made, the changes to it have, the changes to it were made so that, the first change was so that the asset forfeiture board could approve things up to $10,000 without coming to this board. The second thing was that they could award funds up to $50,000 a year without coming to this board, or this county commission. The third thing was so that the sheriff or the chairman of the asset forfeiture board could approve things for the task force just by his signature alone without even going to the asset forfeiture board or the county commission. I asked Verlin. Verlin's going to come on down and maybe add a little bit of explanation to it, and if you have any questions for either one of us.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Okay, so this board was created from the change in the state law on the asset forfeiture side. Previously, we have the task force board that is made up of all of the member agencies. We have the sheriff's office for Williams County, Wilson Police Department, McKenzie County Sheriff's Office, Devine County Sheriff's Office, and hopefully we'll again have Watford City PD as well. So we've already got that board and an MOU in place that's signed by all of those members that sets a parameter for use of the dollars by the task force already. So what was kind of created, in my opinion, is a redundancy. This, I think, will help streamline some of those. The majority of the dollars that are in these funds are coming directly from the task force as it is. Very rarely do we generate any revenue either from the city side or the county side as far as the civil asset forfeitures. Because Karen and the Williams County State's Attorney primarily does the asset forfeiture work, they were included originally in the MOU for one-third of that asset forfeiture dollars to go to the state's attorney's office for things such as bringing witnesses back that are out of state when we have a fairly transient population, specialized training in prosecution of drug crimes and things of that nature. So trying to streamline the process of the use of those dollars that are already seized by the task force.
Is there a significant amount of money that gets seized annually?
Not annually, per se, but it has accrued over time. You know, when the requests are made by the task force, rarely have I seen them above even the numbers, I think, that are set in our MOU on that side of $1,500. It ends up being useful for smaller equipment purchases and things of that nature for the task force that are sometimes out of budget when we're talking about member agencies that are contributing dollars. It's tough for them sometimes to find the funds for specific pieces of equipment and training.
Perfect.
So will the state's attorney's office still be able to use it for training also?
Yes. And they have just done a request for equipment as well for a better printer in their office for prosecution of cases. It's pretty open between those entities to be able to use it in prosecution.
Just as FYI, there's about $105,000 in the Williams County Asset Forfeiture Fund right now, so. And to be honest, like, most of that money, if not all of it, was actually seized by the task force before the new law went into effect. And so that's why we're really trying to streamline it a little bit more for the task force.
Makes sense. We just need a motion to approve or adopt?
Yes, sir.
The second amended procedure policy?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Use whatever word you want.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Barry.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Helen, you're up.
Thank you. You'll see at the top, this is the vacation carry forward request, phase one. So folks who have a, we have a maximum vacation carryover balance effective August 31st. People who would want to carry forward vacation in subsequent years have to get the permission of both their direct supervisor, which is usually a department head. Sometimes, if there's a department head on this list, it's a portfolio commissioner, and then permission of this commission. And the idea behind that policy, of course, is to try and dissuade people from always have a balance in carrying it forward. Our hope would be that we award people vacation time so that they can be gone from work to find a nice work-life balance, and we'd like them to be using that time. So these four people, as you see, have vacation to carry forward, and it's that amount, it says, for example, 50.73 over maximum. That's the number that we're looking to carry forward. We did this year, put together a little bit of history on this report because we have approximately, I think, if I just do some quick math, I would say we have roughly 300 employees who accrue vacations, use it, and we do tend to have just a handful of people who struggle to get it used. I think that 2020 and 2021 have been challenging years, in particular in a couple of the departments that we see represented here because of staffing issues or just the work demands related to COVID. But certainly, we'd like for folks to be able to use their vacation and not have to bring this forward. In September, I will bring you a list that shows you all of the people who have, by approval of their supervisor alone, because it isn't consecutive years, elected to carry forward some vacation. Sometimes that's folks who, for example, we have a couple of women that are pregnant that will have a baby in the next six weeks, and they choose to carry that vacation forward instead of, and that's to the benefit of their department. Instead of taking a whole bunch of vacation now and then being on a maternity leave, makes sense to carry it into their maternity leave. So there are times when this all makes sense, but this does require your approval today.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the four requests for vacation balances carried forward.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I think we probably need to, with forwarding it, or moving it forward another year with COVID and everything that went on, I think we need to stress the fact that we need to try to get these taken care of and knock these hours down because it doesn't do any good to just keep carrying vacation and carrying vacation. And, I mean, I get it, you like to save it and have it, but I think making it a stress to everyone, use it, because you're going to go crazy if you're at work all the time.
There are always a few people who choose to forfeit vacation, folks who recognize, I didn't get it used this year, and next year's not going to be better for me, or if I didn't get it done this year, I won't. So, so some folks choose to forfeit it. These folks are asking to carry it. So I'll pass the message along. This isn't how we intend the program to work.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none. Beth, roll call vote.
Cory.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Beau.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, we have a standard meeting schedule, which is the first and third Tuesday of the month. The North Dakota Association of Counties does host an annual conference that provides a lot of training and, I guess, training to county officials. And they have not typically had this meeting over the first Tuesday of the month, but this year it is. And so the conference actually gets done on Tuesday after an afternoon session. The afternoon session is something related to HR. Our suggestion, our request, is that we move the time of the regularly scheduled county commission meeting from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on that day. If we move the meeting to another day of the week, it creates a lot of work for all of us, and there are some significant planning and zoning items on that meeting because it becomes a special meeting. So we have to do the, to do it properly, we have to do a number of notices, and then, of course, during the meeting, we have less flexibility to be, to impromptu talk about things that aren't on the agenda. So it would require those of us that need to be here for the meeting to leave, you know, let's call it, after the morning session, don't attend lunch or the afternoon session, and get back here for a 5:00 meeting. We could, of course, push it later, but we will have all had a long day, so I don't know if that's what we want to do.
And you tell me why we have to keep it on the same day?
If we change it to any other day, it becomes a special meeting. And that's where those, that's where we have a lot of notice requirements. These folks have probably, have you already told people the day? Yeah. Yeah, so, so we've already told the planning and zoning, carry forward folks what the date is, and, and as soon as we get into special meeting, it just gets harder. So the open meetings law allows us to change the time on the same date without affecting the meeting status.
Can we just have one meeting that month?
No, planning and zoning has things they need to cover that day. October 5th.
Karen, I have a question. Can a meeting be started at its regular time and then recessed to another day?
That's a good question, David.
Reason I ask, I guess, if there's three of us here, we could have the meeting start at 8:00 and then recess to Wednesday morning.
I don't have an answer to that question. At the top of my head, David, I apologize.
How many of you guys are not going to the conference? Are not going to the conference?
I don't have a problem doing it at 5:00. I don't think it's, won't be a hassle for me, but I'm just one person.
I don't know how long it takes everything to be done. But I'll have to figure it out.
Okay.
Because if I go to the conference, we leave on Sunday.
Yeah, but you usually send everything out Friday. I normally have it Friday.
Yeah, unless there's those people that go, I need it on Monday.
Well, you just don't do that on Monday.
Well, I think we adopted some guidelines way back when, didn't we, that all the department heads needed to get their information to you at a certain time so that you could get it out by Friday?
They don't do it.
Well, that's my point, you know? And Steve, I don't have a problem with it either at 5:00. I'm just, I was just saying, it'd be a good question to know for the future also.
How many people do we, how many commissioners do we need physically present? Because we could, they could dial in, right? I mean...
Free.
Physically present?
Well, no, just... Either on the phone or physically present.
I may, I mean, I, I wouldn't have a problem being here and...
I guess I assume if I... If I'm at the meeting, if can't make it back, I'll just have to be on the phone. So, I mean, I would be able to be on the phone at 5:00.
Yeah, I can be on the phone at 5:00 and possibly here. I don't know. I don't want to make any promises about being here, but I can be on the phone.
And are you, Commissioner Hanson, worried about missing a riveting final session? I mean, you're, you're, are you going...
You're being really funny. I'm not going to break my neck and break a land speed record to get here, funny girl.
I mean...
Because I'm not either.
I mean...
And I mean, if, for, to leave Bismarck at noon, it's three-plus hours to my place, and then it's, you know, not quite an hour here. But I mean, I could, I could probably be here, but I can be on the phone.
But I mean, I could, I could probably be here, but I can be on the phone.
I mean, we should, we could sure say six or seven, if you all feel more comfortable with that. For sure, going through, going through Bellfield, even with a stop for a delicious sandwich.
What's the odds, do you think, I'll be here now? You're not helping the situation here. The odds are getting lower and lower of me actually making it here.
Okay, we'd like a meeting on October 5th, sometime 5:00 PM or later. I leave it to you to decide the plan.
I'm good with it. What if, do we need a motion as such?
Yes, for sure.
I think I'm guessing I'm going to have to make this motion.
And some people stop in every single hometown on the way back.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we change the time to our September.
October 5th.
Or, excuse me, October 5th meeting to 5:00 PM instead of 8:00 AM. And with our technology today, if there's not enough present, the others can call in.
The 5th at five, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Beth roll call vote.
Was that for that second minute?
It was.
Yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wow. All right, the federal government has added a holiday to their calendar, and we do follow the federal holiday calendar. If you remember, I briefed you a little bit about this during budget hearings because it does have a little bit of an overtime impact for us. In, in particular, I would see that overtime happen in the sheriff's office and the youth assessment center. But I think there was general agreement, and, and I did have a follow-up conversation with department heads, and, and there was, there was agreement there as well, that the right thing to do is just to follow, as we have before, the lists of federal holidays. So I would ask, so that I can update policy manuals and that sort of thing, for official approval from this board to add Juneteenth to the Williams County holiday schedule.
How do you spell Juneteenth?
June, and then, then an extra E, N-T-H.
What is June?
It is on June 19th.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to follow the federal holiday schedule and add it to our Williams County.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Beth roll call vote.
Bo.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes. You tearing up on that one? Okay.
All right, position report, I believe that that was in your packet. We do have one position in the sheriff's office seeking approval for today, that is a detective position. We have a detective who has transferred back into the patrol division. And so we now have an opening. Just to give you a little clarification, sorry that I was gone last time. I intended to call in and I just couldn't pull it off. But we did have a lieutenant-level resignation three weeks ago. He's actually moving out of town for a significant other and, and a great life change for him. And so that creates actually a wonderful opportunity for some transitions within the department. Gives people, some folks, the opportunity for upward mobility. And of course, we open every position at the sheriff's office to the public. And so we're also getting external applications from local law enforcement agencies and in some cases, further away agencies. So we've filled that lieutenant position with someone who is already a patrol sergeant. And then you'll see, if you watch the paper or watch jobs and the, or indeed, you'll see that we'll, we'll roll through some, some additional positions as there's shuffling that happens. But in addition to that, we do have a detective moving back into patrol. And so you'll see we have a detective position advertised as well. So I do need permission for this to be filled.
Motion to approve the request for detective for the sheriff's department.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Beth roll call vote.
David.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Wow, okay. Still haven't beat Corey's record.
I mean, I could improvise some more information if you want. Just kidding.
Yeah, I know, that was a year. Thank you, Helen. What's that? We are adjourned.